Allahu Akbar, Assalamualaikum. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Allahumma sallim wasallim wabarikatuh shiina Muhammadul al-Mustafir. Nabi Muhammad sallallahu alaihi wasallam. Surah Asma, Al-Hilal, Al-Qur'an, Al-Qur'ah. Allahumma laa 'alba lana illa ma 'almtina. Inna ka anta al-'aliim haqim. Allahumma 'almtina ma yannfa'na wa nfa'na bima 'almtina. Wa zidna nfa'daka al-murtaa 'aliim inna inna ka ala quljiin qadir. 'Almna ma yannfa'na wa nfa'na bima 'almtina. Okay, now everyone. Ahla masahlan. I wanted to start today by saying that Akbarianism is not and never has been neo-Platonic. Akbarianism is not neo-Platonic. I've never said it's neo-Platonic, ever. Promise you that. And it isn't neo-Platonic. So what people have mixed up is... I put a little quote from an unpublished article of mine in the WhatsApp. So, "On the view," which is the modernist view, "that all philosophical systems are entirely discreet, fundamentally-isolated perspectival phenomena, only coherent according to the stipulations of their self-definitional structures, philosophical notions are not commensurate." So what do I say? Humbly, who cares what I say, but it happens to be the case. What do I say? I say that Akbarianism and Neoplatonism are commensurate. I never said that Akbarianism was neo-Platonic, because it's not. "Only coherent according to the stipulations of their self-definitional structures, philosophical notions are not commensurate," according to that modernist view, which seems to be held by many contemporary card-waving, badge-wearing neo-ash'aris. "And beneficial exigences must therefore exclude comparative philosophical analysis, except in verifiable cases of direct linear influence, for no sufficiently neutral interpretive criteria exists that could justify such comparative activity." I hold, however, as presumably must anyone who considers the comparative endeavor a philosophically fruitful one, that despite possible disparate modes of expression and regardless of great disparities in historical epoch and taxonomical exigencies pertaining to the various philosophical schools of thought, philosophical notions are fundamentally commensurate and philosophical views may validly be subsumed under the same objective broad categories. Although linear historical influence is often... Okay, again, everyone. Although linear historical influence, right, is often the vehicle of the commensurability or even identity of philosophical concept, if someone just copies someone else, via direct transmission from one thinker to another, fundamentally-commensurate philosophical concepts may also be independently discovered by philosophers irrespective of linear historical influence. Okay, now, just to explain that a little bit. Akbarianism is definitely not a neo-Platonic philosophy via linear influence. We know that absolutely for certain because of the nature of the transmission of Neoplatonism to the Muslim world. So there was a previous school of thought that held that, for example, when Ibn Arabi, very occasionally, but he does use the term "al-khair al-mahd" for Allah (ﷻ), there was, there were people... It was the standard view, actually, from the very earliest academic works on Sheikh Al-Aqaba, that that meant that Ibn Arabi had been reading the theology of Aristotle where that term appears. However, the academic consensus now is that that is not the case. He never read the theology of Aristotle. Well, he may have, I mean, God knows, but there's no evidence whatsoever that he read the theology of Aristotle, and there's plenty of evidence that he didn't. And how did he get that term? It was because it was in the jauh, it was in the philosophical maliu of the time, that term. And of course, Ibn Arabi is not going to employ it as a maqalid. He will have considered, is this term legitimate? Does it correspond to Nafs al-A'mar? Right? If it corresponds to Nafs al-A'mar, then al-hakmatu dzalatul mu'min, we can use it. If it doesn't correspond to Nafs al-A'mar, we throw it out. So if Ibn Arabi used "al-khair al-mahd", it means it's because he thought that that term was legitimate in terms of Nafs al-A'mar, in terms of reality, right? It's not because of linear influence. There was an earlier school of thought that thought that he had read that. Now, why is that the case? It's partly the case because when Muslim scholars, some like Mullah Sadr and others, started citing the theology of Aristotle again, it was much, much later. You don't find the work cited earlier. Okay? Second of all, both sides of this debate are mistaken. Why? Because those who are saying, "Oh, no, 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 Ma'adallah, what a horror the idea that there could be any neo-Platonic influence on Ibn Arabi," are coming from this half-literate pseudo-ash'ari perspective, right? That doesn't know anything about philosophy. And the reason they can't even countenance the idea that you could have commensurate concepts which are independently discovered is because they've never had the experience of doing navar themselves. Humbly, personally speaking, and I'm sure it's the case for all of you, I've often reasoned to a conclusion that I then find in a book later. I didn't take it from the book. But I find that it matches the conclusion that I find later. And then usually the reasoning matches. But of course, the roots of reasoning can be very difficult, definitely very different. Okay? So this supposedly pious attitude, which actually does immense harm to the deen because it makes us into that world-religion's blind faith model of, "No, we're just holding fast to the dogmatic orthodox view because that's safer, that's, you know, there's more wada in it," or something. No, there's not, because the moment someone who does know how to do philosophical navar comes to you with teshkeek, you won't be able to do anything, you'll go to pieces and then start just repeating the party line to them. They're not going to be impressed by that. They're working on the level of navar. So you're going to say, "No, that's unorthodox. No, our teacher said that it's not the case." Ta'iyah, he's not going to be impressed by that. He doesn't care. He doesn't even believe in your teachers. Who cares, as far as he's concerned? He has seen that there's a... It's like, you know, when my father, Hafeed al-Hala, was living in these Muslim communities under Sheikh Abdul Qader in the 70s, and they were all living in this commune together. And one day, a very unfortunate Christian missionary came to the door, right? And he was like, he tried to give them the... Of course, he has no idea who's inside. It's this community of converts to Islam who do stay up all night doing hadhras and things like that. So this poor Christian missionary comes to the door and he starts trying to convince my father, who happens to open the door, that that, you know, about the Trinity and the Incarnation and all this stuff. And my dad obviously is like, he encounters someone who, like, there's no chance of making any progress whatsoever. And in fact, my father starts to counter all of the arguments that he's making to the point where the missionary becomes like, "Yani, yahaf al-adinehi, al-a'tiqadehi." And he just suddenly goes, "Wanarrudu billah." He says, "Jesus is God! Jesus is God! Jesus is God!" And then he runs away, literally, right? So, you know, if we want to be in that kind of situation, then by all means, you know, have your dogmatic ash'arism, which is, yani, dogmatic in the sense that our own ash'ari tradition, the Mahathirun, never thought that that was the only position. And many of them didn't hold that position. So both sides are wrong. The side which is saying that, "Oh, there's no chance whatsoever that, you know, our great scholars of our Ummah could have had any influence from any kafir non-Muslim, or that they could have the same ideas." It's ludicrous. It's just from someone who doesn't understand anything about thought, about correspondence with thought with reality. And, yani, our whole deen is musaddiqan of what came before. So much of what came before, it confirms, right? And, "Khairukum fil jahiliyya, khairukum fil islam." You know, the, those who... There is an objective scale of truth and virtue irrespective of that which sanctifies everything, which is ash'ari, la ilaha illa Allah, astaghfirullah. But nonetheless, there has to be a scale of virtue and a scale of truth, more or less correspondence with truth. So that horror that, you know, Al Ghazali could have been influenced by Plato. You know, and then, you know, you make a laughingstock of us because he definitely was. Because the tripartite soul of spiritedness and intellect and anchor, we know exactly where it comes in, in Book IV of the Republic. All you have to do is go and read Book IV of the Republic. Right? Once you've done that, there's no chance that you'll be able to... Yani, unless you have no self-respect, there's no chance whatsoever. Hasha'ukum, there's no chance whatsoever that you'll be able to maintain that he wasn't influenced by Plato. Nonetheless, it was probably, and almost certainly indirect, because it's unlikely that he actually read Book IV of the Republic. But it had entered in to the scholarly milieu, just and the scholarly apparatus, scholarly terminology and kind of toolkit. Much as I hate to use that word. And it's the same with "al-khair al-mahd," right? So that horror is just from people who don't understand what philosophy is. And it'd be better if they just tried to not speak so much. Because it's not, that doesn't do anyone any favors. You're not doing, you're not defending the deen by doing that. It's quite the opposite. You're actually bringing the ridicule of the unbelievers upon us. The other side, which says it's just Neoplatonism, is also fantasizing and complete nonsense that Akbarianism is Neoplatonism. That's also nonsense. Why is that nonsense? Well, for one thing, the term Neoplatonism, as applied to the so-called Muslim Neoplatonists, is a very, very shaky term indeed. Was there even any real Neoplatonism in Islamic philosophy? Is a very open question. I think personally, no. Because all of those so-called Neoplatonists were Aristotelian immanentists, right? Who had some neo-Platonic influence on their ideas of, for example, the agent intellect. Is the agent intellect a Platonic concept? No, it's an Aristotelian concept. But they have a Platonized understanding of the agent intellect. Right? You find that quite often. So, and if you look in the transmission of Neoplatonism to the Muslim world, it was actually very, very incomplete. It was based on two main texts. There were other texts. The main texts were the theology of Aristotle, which was ascribed to Aristotle, as you can tell from the name, which is actually a paraphrase and not a direct literal translation, a paraphrase of, and it's a creative paraphrase that changes a lot, of important passages from the Innias. But it's not the whole of the Innias, and it's missing a lot of doctrines of the Innias. And there's "al-izdah fil khair al-mahd", which is a paraphrase of Plotinus's Proclus's "The Elements of Theology", which was one of the most important texts in its translation into Latin in the medieval Christian world under the name Libardicalsis, "The Book of Causes." Okay? Both of those works miss out a huge number of most important neo-Platonic doctrines. They ontologize, okay? They ontologize what are really henological doctrines very often. So when the Neoplatonic author is saying principle of unity, they're saying being. Okay? And that has immense and very profound consequences. Okay? And as a result, because they thought these works were ascribed to Aristotle, what do they do, these early philosophers? What they try to do is they try to harmonize those works with the real Aristotle, which they also do have, which is explicitly anti-Platonic. So what they're doing is they're saying, "We have this work, you know, we're calling it the theology of Aristotle because it seems to be the good stuff that we don't find in the rest of Aristotle." They don't know, it's not actually Aristotle, it's Plotinus or it's Proclus. But they also do have the real Aristotle. So they're saying, "Well, we need to harmonize this with the real Aristotle we have, which is explicitly anti-Platonic." So you get this mess, philosophically speaking, right? Which the Kalam scholars very rightly look at Imam al-Ghazali, Imam al-Ghazali and Taha'atul Philasafa, a great work. People wrongly think this is from the perspective of kind of nominalist skepticism. But it's not. Platonism often looks like nominalist skepticism. He is critiquing Avicenna's philosophy, which does have lots of holes in it, right? From the perspective of rigorous logical analysis. But when you then look at Imam al-Ghazali in Mishkat al-Anwar, it's a very, very different story. It's obviously not skeptical, skeptical nominalism. Right? I'm not going to start speculating about what it actually is. Ibn Rushd thought that, you know, Mishkat al-Anwar showed that Al Ghazali actually just follows the philosophers and that somehow Taha'atul Philasafa was just a political stunt or something. Hasha', who, you know, I don't believe that for a moment. I really don't. But that was what it looked like to him, and to be frank with you, Ibn Rushd was no slouch. Again, what do we say? It's like, "Oh, Ash'iyu told us that Ibn Rushd is..." Nothing, right? Have you ever read Ibn Rushd? He's amazing. Just like Akhm is amazing, right? Have you ever read Bedaitul Muhtahid? I mean, just look how knowledgeable that man was. He's ridiculously knowledgeable. And try and read Taha'atul Taha'at. It's absolutely brilliant. He's genius, right? So that doesn't mean I think he's right. We should be able to say that without all seizing up, and that means, "Oh, he's saying that he's right." No, you have to respect people's capacities, right? You have to, even if you consider the person your enemy, you have to know your enemy, right? And so if you find all of that a big challenge to your aqeedah, just don't look at it. But don't then tell people who do have the capacity for navar that they can't do what they're doing because that's completely, I mean, it's immensely futile. And the thing is, it brings the, as I've said, it brings we, what you end up with is you're making us susceptible to attacks to our aqeedah. Very ironically, you are making us susceptible to attacks at aqeedah because someone who really has the capacity for Neoplatonism is going to look at you and say, "This person has no, this person's a maqalid." Right? There's no taqeed in aqliya. Okay? Sure, if you don't have the capacity to substantiate your aqeedah, rationally provide yourself with your own justification, then yes, you have to have what is in some sense a type of taqeed. You just, you learn a creed and learn it the best you can and repeat it. And if you don't understand it, try to learn from people who do understand it. But if you don't have that capacity, just try your best, right? Try to have your own internal, in terms of your hadith and nafs. Like when you say to yourself, "Islam is the truth," right? Just try to have your own real rationale that you're convinced by. And if you don't have one, you have to seek one out, right? But you don't need to know all of the details of things, and it's probably a better idea that you don't go near it. Okay? But this idea that you can go around just repeating, you know, what Ash'iyu told us when you don't know anything. You know, you don't know, you've only, you haven't even scratched the surface. It's extremely problematic. Now, there's other people who are saying Neoplatonism, Akbarianism is Neoplatonism. It's obviously not true because they're so different in so many different ways. It's very well-known that there's no verifiable linear influence, or at least it is so marginal that it's not even worth mentioning. What that leaves us is, when you find that there are parities between them, it's because they're commensurate, right? Which means someone that got endowed with a spirit and a mind and a rational capacity who'd been trained in this realm has set the navar and the, and I mean in the broadest possible sense, which includes an inward journey perhaps, in order to try to uncover these haqayat, and they've come to very similar conclusions. So, for example, the Akbarian school has a very similar critique of Aristotelian immanentism to the Neoplatonism. There's no doubt that they didn't take it from the Neoplatonism. They independently discovered it. And this is because there are simply two broad philosophical approaches. One is exemplarism and one is immanentism. That's part of human nature. Like Coleridge said, every man is born either an Aristotelian or a Platonist, right? Because it's about different human tendencies. Remember, the Isra'i school has nothing to do with Aflaton al-Ilaah, as they call him. It's to do with a particular approach which relies on the faculty holism, right, of al-nadar, al-aqli, and tasfia'tul ba'tin, right? And the combination of these two is how they do Ba'th al-Haq'a'qla Sh'at. And of course, those who have the great fortune, the immense and unthinkable fortune of having access to a revelation, that's their most important source, and that's what they test everything against, right? Or they make that their criterion for everything. Now... So... So the commensurate, in that way, the critique of Aristotelian immanentism is very similar, right? So if you look in Qaisri, if you look in Fanadi, if you look all over the place, you will find that they don't believe that "al-wujud yatwaqfu al-ta'yun", that existence depends upon individuation fil khairij, right? They believe there are different maratib to existence, right? Which have different individuation conditions. So how does something become an individual? In this realm, there are different theories, but in most of the time, people will agree that it seems to rest in some sense upon matter, right? Being determined by the categories. Okay? So you've got the categories, Aristotelian categories, and it rests upon matter being determined by the categories, right? So the individuation of an imminent form, okay? So that's the individuation conditions of this world. In higher worlds, there are entities which, yeah, they are distinct things, but they don't, they're not individuated by matter because there's no matter there, right? So if you think of certain conceptions of the angels, for example, in certain conceptions of the angels, they are timeless. The beings in al-am al-ara, they are timeless because time, right, is only for al-mutaghairat al-tadrijiya. So mutaghairat tadrijiya are things like us, which, look, we're, we have our limited individuation right now in time. You know, is this moment the whole of our being or the full realization of our being? No, I'm sitting limitedly here. This poor meskeen little creature who's just here. And I rest upon the next hour in order to unfold what it is that I want to say because I can't, my individuation is such, and all our individuation is such, that we can't know everything at once, right? If I, if I want to go from the prayer room to my house, I have to walk, you know, I have to drive in a manner that accords, that is limited by my particular individuation, right? Now, if you're not min al-mutaghairat al-tadrijiya, then you might know not everything, because that's an if Allah (ﷻ), but you might know lots of things at once, right? You might know, you might have the ability to, for example, appear in a place without traveling because your real nature is not that tiedness to matter such that you need to go like one step at a time in the same manner in which something in that realm of being has to. You might be able to appear all of a sudden, right? You might be able to see haqayq. You might, if Allah grants you such a thing, you might be able to be aware of haqayq without having to do navar of tarthib al-muqaddimat, right? You might immediately see the truth of something. And a lot of people understand that the angels are like that. They already have the haqayat before them, right? To a significant degree. What I'm trying to make you think is about what it would be like to have different individuation conditions where you're not limited in the same way that we're limited here. So the Akbarian understanding is that there are, there is an intelligible realm that also makes them like the Platonists. All that means, you can call it the Raib if you want. In fact, I'd encourage you to do so. There is a realm, okay, which is, which underlies this realm. This realm can't exist without it. Of course, everyone says Allah (ﷻ) underlies this realm. But what this point of view is saying is, yes, but Allah (ﷻ) has lots of other creations, not just what they call al-am al-mulk, but there's lots of other degrees of being which are all created by Allah (ﷻ) and which all have their particular function, and they're all interconnected with each other, right? That's what it's fundamental. Go ahead.
The individuation conditions for al-am al-mulk, that the matter is informed by the categories.
Well, that's according to some people. Yeah, you don't necessarily believe that.
In terms of, from an exemplarist perspective...
Could you shout, please?
From an exemplarist perspective, how would we, in distinction between kind of al-am al-mulk and al-am al-ra'af, for example, how would we understand matter per se? Because would it not be seen as like an actualized potentiality that in a sense would be violating the middle, it doesn't have it? So how would we see that individuation condition?
It doesn't really exist. Yeah, it's just a, it's just a, an intellectual... Ultimately, it is just a a concept, yeah. But as we know, concepts are not in any way... We don't have an abstractive model, so concepts are something. Having an aqli reality doesn't mean it's nothing. Doesn't mean it depends upon our minds either, right? But it's a martabah, aqliya, okay? But we'll do a whole session on matter, right? It's very, it's very rich and broad in the Akbarian tradition and in the Platonic tradition and in the Peripatetic tradition. It's very interesting as well. What prime matter means and exactly how they argue for it, right? Because the idea is that you have to have a qabil for al-ittisal al-infisal. This is the Peripatetic method. There has to be a qabil for al-ittisal and infisal. It can't be ittisal, which is the pure nature of a body, right? Because that would be al-jama'ab bin naqaidin, because al-ittisal is not al-infisal, right? So that, that's one of the, so that's why there has to be something else which is not just the ittisal of a body, right? And is not pure infisal either, either, which can be the substratum of both of them. And that's what they call hule, that's what they call matter. So, but we'll go into that. Anyway, the point is, and that's in the Peripatetic method. But, so there are different degrees of being and they're all connected to one another. And this is seen to be necessary from an intellectual perspective because of the critique of immanentism and which is dealt with very thoroughly in my book. And it's also seen to accord very well with the no-sauce of the deen as well, right? So for example, and let me give you the proviso, you know, if you know the basic principles of tafsir and things like that, you would never say this is shadi meaning is the meaning of the verse. No, the meaning of the verse is that which is in accordance with, as you know, the list of things, but in accordance with, you know, what is considered to be valid in the Arabic language, what is in terms of asbab al-nazool and all of those things that you know. So, you know, the tafsir that you get in Jalalain or in al-tasheel or in whatever it happens to be, and you bring together, you know, the reports that you find in tabari, and then you have the more aqli approach, which also relies on, you know, asbab al-nazool and obviously the Arabic language and someone like Bayt Dawi, which is really a mahktasir of Imam ar-Razi's tafsir. And then you have, you know, great tafsirs like Abu Sa'oud, which everyone then copies for the next 500 years without mentioning his episode. And then you go back to episode, it's like, "Oh, it's Abu Sa'oud again." Which is great. It's a very, very great tafsir. So that's the, that's the meaning of the Quran. But the Quran also has this infinite richness. But you can't detect... But you can't detect, you can't say, oh, that's the meaning, that is shadi meaning, that is the meaning of the Quran. Nah, you can't say that. But nonetheless, it's one of, it's part of the richness of the fullness of the Quran. Because of the nature of the Quran and its divine origin, it has that extraordinary yani, the amazing thing about the Quran is whenever you try to see the coherence of the different verses, whenever you look into it, you always find that it's coherent. That's one of its miracles, every single time. And all of these different approaches to it are coherent, all these different frameworks. But for example, ar-az bil al-mishan al-azim wa immin shaytin illa andana khazainahu wa manu nazilahu illa bi qadar ma'alu. By the way, if I make any mistakes, please tell me, because when you're talking, it's very difficult to concentrate. So there, there, there's not a thing but that we possess its treasuries, right? And then we don't, do not cause it to come down except in a proportion, in a qadar, in a determinate proportion or determinant measure, which is known, right? You'll find in many Akbarian tafsirs that khazain means al-ayana thabita. Okay? Khazain is referring to al-ayana thabita, okay? Then you have verses like al-razan al-mishan, right? tasabihulahu samaa tasabahu al-ardhu aman fihin wa immin shaytin illa wa illa yusabihabi hamdi wa lakil la tafqahuna tasbihum, right? For the Akbarians, that grounds their understanding that the whole world is conscious and alive, okay? Which they, they don't believe like some account, some, some Asheris that it's that nothing's really alive, it's just that at that moment Allah and as, you know, in this occasionalist model, just makes it look like it's alive, for example, which is one view. There's also, for example, you know, what is it? nach timaala fahimat khalimun idhim. What's the beginning of the verse? Sorry? What? Sorry? Say it loudly. wa tukhalimun idhim. tashadu arjulun bi maqaniyakshibun. For example, on that Akbarian understanding, that's because they are always conscious, isn't it? And whereas in the they've always been their recording, right? It's a different understanding. There's also, you know, a hadith about, as, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm maybe wrong, but al-kamaqal about the walls, you know, for example, bearing witness to our actions and and so on. Then I have a hadith expert here. But if it helped me, I'd be very, very appreciative, but in any case, and so many other things, hamdulillah. Allah bless, bless him and benefit us through his Barakah and those of his shield, inshallah. But in any case, so they, they understand that there are proof texts. They understand, for example, when you talk about al-am al-mithal. Al-am al-mithal has proof text, for example. It's not so much proof texts, it's just that they say, well, we can lean upon the proof text just as well as you can, okay? And this is how we interpret it, this is what we believe to be the case. So for example, when Sayyidina Jibril appeared to the Sahaba, right? How can Sayyidina Jibril in his haqiqah appear to the Sahaba in an image? How, because what you're saying is that form is Sayyidina Jibril, but it's not. Sayyidina Jibril in himself is not that form, because that was Sayyidina Dakhia, wasn't it? Yeah, it was in the, exactly, sorry? Yeah, so the, so that was yeah, so he would appear in the form of Sayyidina Dakhia. But he also appeared on the mountain when the Prophet SAW came out onto the mountain and filled up the whole horizon, didn't he? In a different form, right? There are things like the, the, the death itself being slaughtered, right? And appearing in the form of a yeah, which is a black ram?
It shouldn't, the color is.
Oh, it's not black, okay, I made that up. It's a good, good thing I've got, I say, I'm lucky I've got Sayyidina Ma, Sayyidina Man today. So I can afford to make a few mistakes, because I can question. No, I'm just asking, I know, no, I don't, I don't remember, yeah, okay, we don't remember. So forget the black thing, but it's a ram. And, you know, and it is said that death has been killed, right, it's been slaughtered. Okay, so what does that mean? How is death a ram? And how can you kill it? Then, so they, they understand that in terms of al-am al-mithal as well. Because al-am al-mithal is the realm where pure meanings like death take on images, they take on forms, not necessarily one form, they take on multiple forms. They can take on multiple. Well, like when the Prophet SAW was given a choice, what was it between milk and wine? Okay, mat and chamaj are also milk. And he chose the milk, and he was said that you've chosen the fitra, right? That's also interpreted in terms of al-am al-mithal. So they, they, they have ways to understand, of understanding. And the thing about Ibn Arabi, which people don't realize, and I've got nothing to do with Ibn Arabi, yeah. But they don't realize is that he he, he has an, like a mind blowing interact engagement with the Nusus of the Hadith and the Quran. And he's very, very literal, he's very, he's a literalist. That's why ironically, some, there's some kind of affinity in, in a way with the I don't know how to say this. With people who take the Nusus very, very literally. And you can imagine who those might be. So that, yeah, there, there is a, it's, you know, you would think, oh, he's the polar opposite to those who are very, very rooted in the wahir sense of the Nusus, but it's not the case. He's the most rooted in that sense. So, but you know, where is the commentability? The commentability is, for example, in the fact that the world of intellect in Platonism, okay? Is the world which underlies our world, just like in Akbarianism, al-am al-araah. Okay? And which is created, the first created realm underlies our world, not directly, because in between is al-am al-mithal, okay? Al-am al-mithal is a mathar of al-am al-araah. Al-am al-araah is a mathar, a place in which something becomes wahir under new individuation conditions, is a mathar of al-am al-ayana thabita. And yes, they do call it al-am al-ayana thabita, you will find that. That's because it is the highest level of knowledge that you can have. Okay, according to the broad Akbarian method, you can't know God in himself, not Kashfen, not in Moshe hada, not in any other way. You can only, because he is known only to himself. You can only know him in terms of the ayana thabita. And you can, according to them, have knowledge, it's positive, the highest level of knowledge possible is the level of the ayana thabita, the al-hadra al-almea, right? The, the great Arafun can have access to that realm by the grace of God, because it's determinate. It's knowable in principle. And the highest a'yn thabit is the al-haqiqah muhammadiyya. Again, don't be confused by al-wahda. Because al-wahda, which is the haqiqah muhammadiyya, is the the a'yn thabit that the wahidiya branches out from, right? So the, the hoard of the Asmat happens via the haqiqah muhammadiyya. But that doesn't mean like the haqiqah muhammadiyya has this higher ontological status and somehow it's in the godhead, nah, only Allah Ta'ala is, it has true being, right? These are his objects of knowledge. It's not, there's no other being alongside Allah Ta'ala whatsoever. There's no other being alongside Allah Ta'ala in his raib, okay? Those determinate entities are consequences of his self-knowledge, they are not God, right? They are constant, because, because he's alim, he has to know every possible object knowledge. The opposite of that is to say he's not alim, which is gur. So he, he's alim, okay? He's alim, he knows all of the infinite possibility of possible ways of knowing his own essence in determinate mawahir. He knows all of the, because of the infinite wealth of his essence. He knows all, all possible things, right? And those become determinate as the ayana thabita. Now, first, right, he see, but it's not first, because he's not in time. First, he sees these things, all of possible creation in one jam'ah entity, right, which is the haqiqah muhammadiyya, all of those other things. It's not first in, 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 in a temporal sense, but there's a priority, right? Because everything else is a branch of the haqiqah muhammadiyya. So the, you know, the the, you know, the sun and the moon and the stars and the angels and the the world and the, everything is a branch of the haqiqah muhammadiyya, right? There's a beautiful poem about that by Sheikh Mohammed Al-Habib and many other. But I can't, it's not coming to mind. It starts with Muhammad and mansha ul-anwari wa dzilali wa aslu takwi niha fi al-am al-azali. But then it goes into all the other things, that all, you know, the the sun and the moon and the star, they all came from the Prophet SAW. But it's an object of God's knowledge, everything's qadeem in God's knowledge, right? Doesn't mean it's qadeem in its essence, it doesn't have an essence, it's just an object of God's knowledge, only God exists, right? So, in that realm. So so then the unfolding of the, of the, of the potential for determinate forms of existence that exists in the ayana thabita then becomes determinate in al-am al-araah, in al-am al-mithan, in al-am al-mulk. It's an unfolding of being because of the multiplication of qiyud, okay? Now, so there's, there are, there are, there's, there is a commentability in terms of the there's a commentability in terms of the fact, for example, when it comes to al-am al-araah. Now, everyone mistakenly thinks the forms of the ayana thabita, that's not the case. For a reasonable discuss, that's where, that's why you know that it's not neo-Platonism, for example, many other examples. Because they didn't have that level of ro'a, frankly, and sophistication to understand the ayana thabita. Why? Because the ayana thabita are the suar of the Asmat. And, and the Platonists don't have a concept of the divine names. Pseudo Dionysius did to a certain degree, which he took from Christianity, because he was a Christian and, and it's amazing. And there's no, there's no question that, see, I mean, there's no chance that pseudo Dionysius influences Islam. Well, there's one article claiming it, but I just find it very weak, the argumentation. And we don't need to be influenced by pseudo Dionysius, we have the Quran, because it's doctrine of names, you know? walela ilas mat l-husna. So yes, so the, so that level of, well, where do the, where do the forms come from? The Platonists can't answer that question very well. So they have doctrines like the doctrine of the unwritten doctrines where the forms somehow arise from, you know, a peiron and peras, infinity and limit, and there's a whole doctrine of how the forms themselves arise from prior metaphysical principles. But there's nothing like the Akbarian doctrine with its extraordinary richness, right? That the ayana thabita are mawahir of the divine names. That's how the divine names become manifest as determinate, quad-determinate. Allah Ta'ala has those names and those attributes in himself, but in an unknowable way, right? The, he's mutlak in that, in, you know, martabat al-la ta'yun. He's mutlak hatta an qaid al-itlaq. But it mustn't be said, as Tustorul 'Alama beautifully says, that he doesn't have, that means he doesn't have those names and attributes in himself. He does, it's just our knowledge stops there, right? So he has it in a super essential manner that we can't grasp, right? But they become wahir in a determinate manner in the ayana thabita. Okay, so the forms are not the ayana thabita. Another, most of these people who are saying stuff, and they probably shouldn't, they've read any Platonism, they've never read any neo-Platonism. They've never read our tradition and they don't understand anything that they're talking about, and they don't know anything about logic, and they have, don't have logic as Amalek, and they don't have kullash makku, as the Iraqis say, right? So, so they don't realize that, for example, in Platonism, the forms are not the straw man version of the forms that you find in a lot of outdated scholarship from the 1950s, which is this duplicate theory that, you know, what Plato is saying is that everything in this world has to have a duplicate in another world and ah ha ha, you know, ha ha ha, what a silly man to think that, you know, that there's this kind of ideal table floating in the sky. And obviously that, that's not the case. Well, that's not, his doctrine never was, never has been. That myth came from the, and Findlay has pointed this out, in fact, dear Dr. Mustafa Aziz has sent some beautiful quotes from Findlay about this very matter. Because this misinterpretation of Plato comes from, it's the legacy of Aristotle's critique of Plato, which is basically a willful misunderstanding, right? But and of course, he's, you know, critiqued left, right and center for this understanding by, by Platonists like Syrianus and, and others whether willfully or not, having completely distorted and misunderstood Plato. So no, the world of forms is al-am al-araah. I mean, it's, and it's not identical, but it's absolutely philosophically commentative, because it's a world of living beings, exemplary beings, but which nonetheless are conscious of themselves and have a plenitude that we don't have, right? So let's say the haqiqah muhammadiyya. Well, we have the microcosmic, macrocosmic understanding of the human being in the sense that the human being contains all of the other realms within him in, in a particular form. And you have al-am al-saghiyad, al-am al-kibiyad, right? But the form, now it's not really a form, because it's the a'yn thabit, al-haqiqah al-muhammadiyya, right? It's not the form, because it's a higher level than the form, that's al-am al-araah, where things take on self-consciousness. But the, the, but the a'yn thabit of human nature is al-haqiqah al-muhammadiyya. And it actually is the, everything else in created being, which will, which will come in subsequently in degraded being, is a farah of the haqiqah al-muhammadiyya. Right? And so what we, what, that's why we encounter these microcosmic and macrocosmic correspondences between individual human beings and the wider world, it's because that is the reality up there, as it were. But the point is the scope of the haqiqah al-muhammadiyya is, is, so that essence is a much broader. It's not limited in the way that we are, it's a much broader entity, because it is the perfect mathar of the divine names in one single jam'ah entity where everything is encapsulated and the perfect balance of Jalal and Jamal is encapsulated in the perfect mathar. But the, the first created manifestation of the haqiqah al-muhammadiyya is what they call al-akhl al-awal, right? Or they also call it al-qalam al-a'ala, okay? And the universal soul, right? al-nafs al-kulliyah, then, is like aloha al-mahfuz, for example, in their understanding. But the point is the, what would be the form of human nature is al-akhl al-awal. Now, that has a much broader type of being, it's not limited, not limitary in the, in the in the way that human nature is in al-am al-mulk, in terms of its instantiations. And those are pure are akhl, if you want to call them, which are majarra, dhan al-mada. The, they're lights, you know, this is the realm of light, right? And they have different individuation conditions. So the point is, as per So the point is, as per the sophist, as per many different of the, of the Innats, in, there's a lot of material on this in six two and in other places, and we'll go into it at some point, inshallah talabat. The world of forms is a, is a world of living beings, right? So that's very important to recognize. It's like an angelic realm. That's why someone like Sahrawardi would talk about Rabb and Noah. And, you know, of course, there, we have Nasirs in the Quran, in the, in the Hadith about, you know, the angels having particular roles, sometimes being charged with caretaking certain natural phenomena, for example. So again, that, you know, not the place to go into it, but they would typically root a lot of these contentions in the Nasirs as much as they can, because they believe in the Nasirs. Again, this is against the thesis of linear influence. Oh, if they have that doctrine, they must have just nicked it, copied it from them. And then they're like, oh, well, we're Muslims, so we have to pretend that it works with the Nasirs. Yani, in the case of someone like Ibn Sina, with all due respect Ibn Sina, yes, that charge may fairly, in some cases, be levied against him. For one thing, he actually is copying Aristotle, as he himself admits. I mean, he's commentating on his works and they believe that he has the right answer and that somehow we have to make the Nasirs fit with that. That is true to a large extent, not, not always. And that is completely unacceptable and completely wrong. The Akbarians never did that, ever. For one thing, but they weren't copying, they believe it wasn't there for them to copy. How can they copy something which wasn't there? So if you're very brave and you act, and you're thinking in terms of Haqiqah Al Asha, yes, you can say Akbarianism is Platonist, only if you mean the broad sense of those are the two polar opposite tendencies of human thought, which are natural to the human being, in the sense that Kheri said, every man is born either a Platonist or a Aristotelian. In that sense, that, yes, I mean, that kind of exhausts the possibilities of human thought. You're either an eminentist or you're exemplarist traditionally. And then now they're, I mean, you might say, well, you could add on being a skeptic or being whatever. But the point is, those, these are the broadest tendencies of human thought. So if you're very brave and that's what you mean, typically someone who actually has studied philosophy and doesn't think you can bluff it, because you can't. It's the, it's the, it's the last thing you can bluff. Like you can bluff quantum physics before you can bluff philosophy, right? So, if you're, if you're mean in that sense, yes, you can say it's Platonist, because you mean as an epistemological approach. Yes, Platonist, Tassfiat al-Batin and the use of reason in a meaningful sense, as subordinated to that process of purification, okay? But otherwise, absolutely not. The Platonism wasn't there for them to copy. So, I just wanted to clear that up. Yes, then the realm of soul, what is the realm of soul? Okay? The realm of soul is the realm of, that in the Platonist understanding is the motive principle. So they, they see this thing called motion in the world. Not only intelligible motion, which is when we, like, start thinking about something, that's a type of motion, but also physical motion. And they say, if these, this motion has instantiations, and it's such a fundamental principle, it must also exist in reality as a martaba of existence beyond its instantiations, right? And so for them, we have souls which move us, like, I want to move the computer, I want to move my hat around, that's the soul doing, it's the motive force, right? But the soul, when it decides what it wants to do, it is subordinate to intellect, okay? Because soul can't distinguish, it just causes motion, it can't distinguish between objects. It's intellect which distinct, which, that, the intellect is simply the distinctness of essences. That's intellect. And sometimes when it's veiled from the distinctive intellect, it can still get to the right answer, okay? Because of knowing the structure, the intelligible structure of the world, right? So whether it gets that from innate ideas or from abstraction, those are different matters. And so the realm of soul, so the world of intellect is the world of distinct ideas or essences in themselves. But in, in itself, it's stable and it doesn't, it's not creative. It doesn't, it doesn't have all of the instantiation. So on the Neoplatonic understanding, it's soul which looks up to intellect and sees all of the forms and says, I want to create, okay? And this is not in a manner that means that the one is not the real creator. And there is a large literature by Gerson and others about the question of whether the Platonicist philosophy is an emanation, emanationist philosophy or a philosophy of creation. By the way, we always assume it's an emanationist philosophy, because we've never read it. And again, Neoplatonism was not properly transmitted to the Muslim world, including most of the important parts. So all of those aqim, sad questions about, you know, emanation, which Imam al-Fazali rightly refuted. And, you know, Ibn Sina's doctrine of emanation is indefensible and inexcusable. And really weak, the weakest part of his philosophy. But that's nothing, it's got nothing to do, you, you assume that, okay, that's Neoplatonism, therefore that's what the Neo, the real Neoplatonist, historical Neoplatonist thought. It's not, go and read them, right? So, um, in any case, so soul looks to the realm of intellect and one, and, and has this creative desire to create a multiplicity, because it's one, when it looks at the forms, they're, they're all one. But it, but they have this immense power, this immense donames. And so it wants to create multiple instantiations in a world, as we have the world soul also, right, which is the, the single soul of the whole world. You know, it's that, that which possesses all of the logoi, which are the intelligible principles rendering the world a single whole, coherent as a single whole, where everything relationally makes sense together. Why are all of these things in the world in relation to each other? We are already in relation to each other, to trees, to the sky, to, because we are all one world. For them, that's only possible if there's a world soul, which governs all of those motions together and makes them one, right? So that's their understanding. Now, read deeply into the Akbarian tradition about alam al-mithal, because that, again, it's the multiplication of the single meaning in lots of different images, you see? That's why there's a commensurability, which is frankly extraordinary, when you really see it with your eyes. But they didn't take it from them. Now, let me ask you a question. Couldn't it be that both of them looked at the world with their particular method, which includes Tassfiat al-Batin and the use of the mind? And remember, these are pre-Islamic people. And Allah ta'ala in His grace, actually gave them a part of, a bit of Haqiqah Al Asha, right? And then, why isn't that possible? Could tell me what aqeedah principle that, that violates? Please, tell me. So isn't it, and then later, in a far greater manner and with a much greater directness and with the aid of the revelation and the Haqiqah Muhammadia, the Akbarians found commensurably the same reality, but with much greater directness and fullness. Why not? And then there are some things which the Neoplatonists, which I do believe, by the way, and I'm not a Neoplatonist, there are some things which the Neoplatonists simply got completely wrong because of their human fallibility. Can someone tell me what, what's wrong with that? So in any case, that's the, that's the realm of soul, realm of intellect. And then they didn't get to the Ayana Thabita. And worst of all, they lacked the doctrine of, of Haqiqah Muhammadia, the perfect man, which is al-martab al-jami'a. So again, how do they take it from Platonism, which wasn't there? But then again, to deny the commensurability when you don't even know what either of them are saying, and you think that's pious? Yani, just be quiet. If you, if you don't, if you don't understand what you're looking at, you can't be defender of the faith, right? It's impossible, you can't. So just be quiet, very simple. Stick to what you know. And that, you know, this is the problem of the democratization of discourse today, that is, it's really very, very sad and people, anyway, hamdulillah. Oh, I'm going to enjoy editing this video. Okay, now, um, so I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. I think what we'll do now today, does anyone not have a copy of this, by the way? You don't have a copy? Do you have a copy, sister? Do you have a copy, brother? Do you have a copy? I know, you need a, you need this one, yeah. Anyone have a copy? You've got a copy? Do you have any friends? Okay. Any friends who need copies? Because they're just going to sit here. Oh, that leaves me with anyone, okay. Um, we just very quickly go on. Okay. So, um, who's happy to read? Are you happy to read, Malan and Yas?
Sure. From where though?
Page thirty seven, for the Kant of the CPR.
Okay, so I'll begin, inshallah. For the Kant of the CPR, knowledge can only obtain when two faculties of human cognition, the understanding which yields concepts and sensibility, which involves intuitions of time and space, come together to produce experience. Yet concepts and intuitions
There is quite a lot of crackling on the mic, is there any?
All right, let me try this.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work, then we can try something else. Yet concepts and intuitions do not reveal things in themselves.
Perfect.
The Kant of the CPR has resolved the conundrum concerning their agreement that had so troubled him in seventeen seventy-two. Concepts, concepts and intuitions agree because they are both subjective impositions, united in the equally subjective transcendental unity of apperception. The intuitions of time and space are projected upon and, as it were, cover over a world whose true nature we can never know, exactly because time and space have veiled that true nature, rather than in any sense representing it. The other necessary component of cognition, the pure concepts of the understanding or categories, such as unity, causality and subsistence, are purely mental. They are not abstracted from particulars as both the Aristotelian construction of the categories, as well as the transcendentals were thought to be by medieval scholastic philosophers. Nor do they constitute a prior framework of intelligible reality, as we have seen is the case in Plato. As we have seen in the case, as we have seen is the case in Plato. For Kant, the categories render intelligible the deliverances of sensible intuitions. But since the categories can only be made to apply to the only matter of cognition available to us, namely, the sensation, which is formally constituted by the forms of time and space, which are entirely subjective. And moreover, because the categories are rooted in nothing beyond their imminent manifestations in minds, they too are entirely subjective.
Yeah, just quickly, the forty-eight, number forty-eight note is just about Kant's actual references to the transcendentals in the critique. And Shalim, my forthcoming book from Tabah, Time, Space and the Transcendentals, Human Being at the Isthmus of Physics and Metaphysics, I go into that in great detail. So go on, Sidhi.
Okay. That which cannot be experienced, that is via the synthesis of concept and intuition, cannot be known to be true at all. Now, since mathematics and physics do not purport to go beyond this definition of experience, they are genuine sciences that truly extend our knowledge. Mathematics and physics do thus yield knowledge, but only knowledge of appearances. Metaphysics, on the other hand, claims to offer us knowledge of nonsensible realities, such as the soul, God and the general structure of intelligible reality, which for Kant can be the objects of no possible experience.
Okay, so for Kant, both special metaphysics, soul goal, soul, soul goals, the soul, God and so on, cannot be known, because they, they're, they're the objects of no possible experience. And the general structure of ontology, general metaphysics or general ontology can also, is also impossible for Kant. Okay? Go ahead, Malan.
This is because the concepts of the understanding pertain to objects in general, not to any distinct object per se, and their independent employment cannot thus produce knowledge of any distinct entity.
No, sorry, Habibi with Malai Nias, but are, are you possibly putting the microphone a bit too close?
Yes, I believe I am, I'll try to
Yeah, I think that's it, because it keeps on having that. I just, thinking about the recording, it's going to be a bit distracting.
No, very good point. I'll try to keep it further away.
Thanks, Sidhi.
If it happens again, you can either remind me or try something else, inshallah. This is because the concepts of the understanding pertain to objects in general, not to any distinct object per se, and their independent employment cannot thus produce knowledge of any distinct entity. Of course, science uses concepts in order to illuminate the nature of particulars, not merely to confine itself within the realm of pure concepts. This is why these concepts must be fused with intuitions in order to provide genuine, non-trivial truths, again, what Kant calls synthetic a priori truths, or a priori truths.
Okay, so for Kant, just a quick interjection.
Sure.
Yani, all of this traditional metaphysical speculation has really been aqim. He knows it very well. He's, he taught metaphysics at Koenigstberg and he used Baumgarten's handbook on metaphysics, which is now published, is really worth having a look at, because you'll see what the, what's it called, Wolfian metaphysics was like. He, he loves metaphysics and it's what he spent his whole, I mean, decades of his early life doing. But he, he thinks it's really important for clarifying our concepts and the, and the questions it raises are very important questions. But he thinks that it makes absolutely no progress, it's simply a grasping amongst concepts. Because it's based on this delusion for him, that the mind simply by clarifying its concepts, there has, there's some isomorphism there with actual reality and that by clarifying your concepts, you're actually clarifying reality as it is in itself. And by showing the actual determinations of, of the apparatus of our cognition and the, the, the actual form that they take intuition, which is sensibility, understanding, which is concepts, which are the categories of the understanding, by showing the actual architecture of our human knowledge, he feels that he's shown that this appearance of actually getting somewhere in Marifat Haqiqah Al Asha is simply an illusion. And that's because there are two components of, of, of human experience, which is all that we can know. I mean, it sounds badihi, you can't know what you can't experience. So, once we find out what we can experience and anything which transcends that, it's just mere assertion, we can't know it. So, for him, there are two main components. They of course become unified in the transcendental unity of apperception. And that's how they, in a rather Platonic manner, but, you know, a very distorted Platonic manner, because he thinks that a very distorted platonic manner, because he thinks that everything, this is all imposed upon the object, but he thinks that the intuitions and the, the concept of the understanding have to be united in that single knowing subject in terms of its knowledge of itself, that's the transcendental unity of our perception. And that's also imposed upon the object for Kant, it doesn't reveal things in themselves either. And. So. These two components are intuitions and concepts, okay? Now, I've repeated this so many times, I really hope that people who've heard me repeat it are getting it as a kind of Malika, because that's what I'm hoping for. The, so the intuitions, intuitions are direct relation to an object. And I'm saying that in a philosophically broader sense than mere, than just in Kant. And actually, if you can avoid the errors of Kant, and this is not easy, you can take beneficial things from him because he has a, no doubt, a great mind and he, a lot of the philosophical tools that he brings to bear and uses, as long as you can kind of dust them off and get rid of all the, the dirt, it can actually be very helpful in clarifying the nature of philosophy itself. So, you know, the cat, the, not the category, to not confuse us, but the, the idea of an intuition is a very legitimate part of, of our array of philosophical tools and of, of what we can justifiably consider to be part of the nature of our of, of our cognitive apparatuses as knowing subjects. So, the, the, so intuition is the direct relation to a distinct state of affairs or a singular object or to a, an irreducible concept. So, for example, I would say that the first principles of of logic and being, such as what Dr. Kareem Laham has written about so beautifully in his book, The Anatomy of Knowledge, let's say the principle of non-contradiction, for example, and the other principles, are known by intuition. And that's the sense in which, I mean, they're known by the direct relation of the knowing subject to an irreducible object of knowledge. What does that mean? It means that there are certain concepts and principles which are irreducible, they're so fundamental, they can't be defined, right? And they can't be subordinated by anything else, they just are the most fundamental things we have, there's nothing more fundamental. So, we're always going to be using them in any act of knowledge. Every time you try to define being, for example, you will always be using it already in your definition. So, that's why it will always, you'll never, you'll never get anywhere. You can have a rasam of being, but you can't have a definition of being because it doesn't share and anything it would share in would have being, so you don't like, well, what's the being over there then? Which was already there, right? And, you know, you can't, this is an Aristotelian view, actually, it's, there are problems with it, as, as rucksull as it seems, but, but also, but let's say from that, I was sending, understanding, but, and the differentia of being is also impossible because the differentia, how can you differentiate something which is already presupposed and everything you might talk about, including the differentia, right? So, that, but so, but the point is, we, our knowledge of first principles is by intuition, it's by the direct relation that we possess as knowing subject to an irreducible object of knowledge. So, you know, what applies to it is our definition of right, it's la yhtamlanakid, you can't, the very nature of our, of our cognitive apparatuses is that we directly, via intuition, that direct relation, know. Now, that's not the, the argument of, of my book, right? What Molana Karim is trying to do and does beautifully is root these in B. But our project was very much set up in order to be complementary. So, that's the issue of foundationalism. How do you root your complex propositions and your complex assertions about the world, intelligible reality, states of affairs? How do you root those ultimately in some, in that which is self-evident? If everything was novari, you know, as it says in Shata Mark and elsewhere, then ultimately you'd have this endless tassels of justification, you'd never be able to get to the beginning. So, our knowledge has to be rooted ultimately in things which are self-evident. What Molana Karim is showing is that those self-evident concepts, they're not just logical, what the modern mind would say is, okay, they look like they're self-evident to you, but you are just the particular kind of being you happen to be and they're mental, so you're really imposing them upon the world. So, you know, why can't I be a woman? You know, I've been agonizing, you know, I've kept it from you all, but I've been agonizing for decades, but because I really think I'm, I'm a woman, right? And, you know, I really, I'm not saying literally, I'm just saying, Yanni, as a thought experiment. And, and so I, Yanni, if, if, if the principle of non-contradiction is imposed, as they believe it to be, then there's no reason I can't be a woman, because it's just a, it's just a social construct, like, you know, femininity and womanhood is just a social construct, which, you know, I can choose the other social construct. And so, you know, society has been built such that we think that the world, which is actually just a web of social constructs, actually is concrete reality itself, but it's not. All of those, that supposed hierarchy and, and, you know, like realist principles, it's actually just all mental. You know, you've imposed that upon the world, so why, all we, I really have access to is my, is my pure freedom, just like everyone else. So, why can't I be that? Who's gonna, Yanni? It's just pure oppression for you to stop me, right? So, what Molana Karim was showing is that, no, the principle of non-contradiction is not just a mental principle, it's a principle of being, it's inescapable, it's a principle of being. Okay, but that's not the same as what I was doing in my book, they're complementary. And, you know, this was set up beautifully by Molana Karim, so that we all took care of a particular aspect of a full theory of knowledge. My one is about the theory of truth, right? So, it's not just the case that the, that, that we have self-evident concepts which, and principles which are the basis of our knowledge. But what I tried to show is that those principles are embedded in reality, in all of its domains, right? Not simply imminently in terms of experience, but in all of the domains of reality, in intelligible reality, in the way that things really are in themselves, because it's a massive problem, which is even the way in our, that our alamat frame the problem, which is in a correspondence theory, which is our theory of truth and is the only theory of truth, by the way. Yanni, today you have all these different theories. And, Yanni, the identity theory goes with the correspondence theory, but all these different theories, which are all variations on the coherence there, and it's all nonsense. It's not a theory of truth at all, and you have even the no-truth theory by Klein, and it gets really quite risible. But there's only really one theory of truth, which is that what is in the mind, if it is true, corresponds to reality as it is in itself. But then you ask, well, what is reality? The problem with thinking that reality is just this world of individuated particulars is that most of what we know about the world doesn't correspond to that. That's why everyone thinks that our cognitive apparatuses are imposed upon the world, that's why we have subjectivism. So, what I'm trying to show is, no, our concepts correspond, right? And our principles correspond and our mental represent, representations, our universalized representations actually correspond to a broader reality, to the realm of extramental, because extramental particulars is just a determination of that broader reality, which is really in itself an intelligible reality, which then becomes mirrored in our minds as these determinant portions of intelligible reality, all with our own perspective right now, look at all of us, looking at the same reality, right? So. That's the, so that, that's the, the basic difference. So. He thought that that was the case, that it's simply given the nature of intuitions, the only kind of intuition we can have is an intuition of our empirical intuitions in terms of sensation and in terms of time and space. Again, time and space for him is an intuition, right? It's something that we impose upon the world and that provides us with the framework for our direct relation to empirical objects through sensation. And. But, again, these are like abstractions, a bit like the case in the peripateticism, which, and this was a charge level against Kant, I think very rightly, although there may be ways to answer from Kant's perspective, which are not fully satisfying, but may be satisfying to him. But it's a bit like the Aristotelian problem of matter and form, you know, Hule and, you know, the Haule and the Sora, they, they, they can't exist without each other. So, you know, Haule in itself is pure potentiality, doesn't exist. And the form, obviously, for Aristotle doesn't exist on its own either. They only exist in terms of the individual, when they become fused together, but they're not there to get fused together. So, you know, it's a little bit like Kant's thing, you know, intuitions are not there on their own. And, you know, there's no pure intuition just sitting there on, on its own without the, and we can't have an experienced gist of time and space without the, whatever on earth it is, that things in themselves is making us have an infial, is giving us an affection of with an A, right? And the categories illuminating its nature, it doesn't exist. So, they, they, so he's in a way just looking and he's kind of passing everything into these broadest categories, which is, it's a bit questionable, to say the least, but in any case. So, that is, those are, you know, so intuitions are not about things in general, they're only about determinant objects, a direct relation to, to a singular thing. And the categories, the concepts which give, you know, as he says, intuitions without concepts are empty and concepts without intuitions are blind, or is it the other way around? Most of Aziz.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you said it right, intuitions, concepts without intuitions are, are empty and intuitions are concepts of life.
Thank you very much, I hope so. But with the magic of video editing software, I can make it right anyway. I'll just, you know, I'll just do a voiceover, you'll see my mouth going blah, 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 and I'll be like, intuitions without concepts, it will be perfect. I'm just kidding. So. In any case, so that's what he said, something like that, that, the, the point being that they require each other. And they fully require one another, they, you can't have one without the other. That's, and this is his great criticism of both the empiricists who don't have a place for the concepts really, except insofar as they're supposed to be reducible to the empirical thing, which he thinks is absurd rightly. And it's also a critique of the rationalists, because rationalists don't have the intuitions, they didn't have a place for the, the empirical knowledge. So. They think you can just be an armchair metaphysician who doesn't bother to even look at the world and just by thinking you can get to absolute reality, which he thinks is absurd. The point being, metaphysics for Kant is just there, the real metaphysics, the reformed metaphysics that Kant wants us to have, is just there fundamentally to provide the theory of our knowledge acquisition. What are the a priori structures of our cognition which enable us to then have experience? What is presupposed by experience? Like, could you, you could say that that's the transcendental, that doesn't mean he doesn't think there could be metaphysical foundations for natural sense, but there would be those kind of metaphysical foundations. So. Any thoughts, anyone? Most of Aziz. Could you illuminate? This is a.
Not at all, Sal, I just took a question. One thing that I've, you know, in trying to understand the relationship between Kant's, at least as he sees it, critical standpoint, his critical understanding of knowledge and being versus what he calls the dogmatic understanding of, of, of the two in, in traditional metaphysics, traditional speculative metaphysics. I, in trying to understand the relationship between them, I've stumbled across some points of continuity, such as ones that, that, that you have mentioned as well. And one point of, of possible point of continuity that I wanted to ask you about is is this, that even in Plato and in, in traditional, let's say platonic, neo-platonic thinking, there is a space for the insight that the average, everyday knowing comportment that we have to objects, the way they show up and we relate to them in the sort of mundane, everyday mode of engagement and thinking about them. All of these objects show up to us as if we're bound by space and time. So, so. I think in the Republic, when Plato is making a distinction between De Annoya and Noos, these two modes of knowing, where he says that, and he's talking about the geometers. He's saying that certain geometers, the, the, the De Anoetic ones, I suppose, or the, the non-dialectical geometers, we can say. That's, I think, what the term is there, the non-dialectical geometers. When they think of a circle, they think it's something spatial, they think it's something extended. But then the, the, the person who is a dialectician knows that the reality of a circle is not something in space, it's a qualitative unity and essence. And he or she treats it as such, and discourses about it as such, but, but it's not in space, it's not a thing with parts. That's what, the essence of circularity is not that. So, so I think that even in Plato and these early thinkers, there is this intuition that when the reality of circles shows up, it will always show up in space as, as a figure, as a schema. Even though the, 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 the form, as he says, I think in one of, it's our schema, it's not a figure, it's not non-figure, it can't be a figure. But, but in this average, everyday level of cognition or, or knowing comportment to objects, they will always show up in space. But then the realities of those objects are not in space. So, I, I was just, I'm always interested to see where these traditional metaphysicians actually have space for intuitions or for certain claims that Kant or critical standpoint theoreticians say only we are making. So, I, I, I think that there is a, a big space in, in, in Plato as well to say that, yes, the, the, the basic noetic content, that is the form of a thing, can only show up to us in this average, everyday form, in a spatial form. That is the only way we can access it, but then some people have a special kind of intuition and access. Of course, Kant doesn't want to use the word intuition for that, but it's totally open to platonic thinkers to use that word. And that is a thought that I, that I think this idea that in its discursive mode, what Kant would call discursive mode, cognition is spatial. It's in space, space is, is a necessary condition for the conceptual poetic content of the reality of things to show up.
Yeah, I mean, De Annoya, De Annoya is, is, is on the level of soul, isn't it? So, De Annoya presupposes this motion.
I see.
And it's a motion through time and, and and, you know, as intimately connected to space, also, you know, insofar as we encounter concepts and, and, and acquire them, not, not necessarily in any dogmatic, abstractive sense, but, and, Yanni, I think on the level that you're talking about, absolutely, the level of ordinary, everyday cognition, things do, these concepts are knowledgeable only in terms of space and time.
Yeah, I, yeah, it just seems to me that that is, that could be the intuition that Kant is capturing with the claim that concepts without intuitions are empty and intuition or consciousness. Every single time I, I think of an object at my average, everyday, universal, something that's shared by all human beings at this, at this level, whenever I think of any object, the only way I can, as it were, make it present for myself is by imagining something in space. Whether it's, so, so I, but what I'm simply trying to say is that there is no reason to think that that intuition or thought cannot be countenanced by a traditional platonic standpoint. I think it has the.
I feel agree, but as you say, they will also say that through purification, as through the. as through the nature of the knowing subject becoming more and more identified through this ascent with the world of forms.
Yeah.
It's also possible to have cash, this oasis, you know, what Kant rejects, which is intellectual intuition. And of course, using all these things quite loosely, but of the exemplary originals in the world of forms, which is really of the rohaniah of these, these, what are, you know, in the realm of, in the imminent realm, concepts or individuals and so forth. And that that is possible as a, in, in, you know, in terms of recollection. And of course, there are some, you know, there's a famous debate between Dominic Scott and others about whether recollection is only this very specialized knowledge of the forms or whether it actually is presupposed in all of our everyday knowledge of sensible particulars, there's a debate about that. But I think it's absolutely right that, no, the, we don't require recollection for absolutely everything. Yanni, the, the imminent mind is suited to the imminent world. Both have these traces of the forms, but they're obscured by the gross corporeality and physicality and our identification personally with, with corporeality, such that, Yanni, they're merely traces. They're not the originals and they're very distorted and we can't see things clearly. But then through this process of purification, the underlying world of forms becomes, comes into clearer and clearer relief. But in any case, thank you very much for that intervention. I think that, I'll just, let's go on a tiny bit, just about, just to introduce this thing in Kant, which is his faculty of reason, because we're always talking about understanding and intuition, but there is actually another faculty, which is the faculty of reason, which Kant doesn't think that we need for basic experience. And it's, it can only remain legitimate insofar as when it's doing its, its work, it is with reference to concepts and intuition. So, okay, so he says, "When traditional dogmatic metaphysicians claim to use concepts alone to reach conclusions about, for example, the existence of God, they're really merely playing with those concepts, which because not applied to actual sensible object can never yield knowledge of real objects. Kant has a ready faculty dedicated to the production of such fancies of transcendental illusion, and this is reason." You couldn't read note forty-nine, could you, Marlena? Yes?
Yes. Okay, so note forty-nine is his quote from the CPR.
Yeah.
"Transcendental illusion, which influences principles whose use is not ever meant for experience, since in that case we would at least have a touchstone for their correctness, but which instead, contrary to all the warnings of criticism, carries us away beyond the empirical use of the categories and holds out to us the semblance of extending the pure understanding."
Is a quick interjection, this is the transcendental illusion, our pure concepts, the pure ideas of reason, which are not, so those are, those are, you know, purely intelligible concepts which transcend the categories. So the categories only pertain to intuitions, right? They don't mean anything on their own. But when we try to use pure concept, let's say contingency, like the world is contingent, right? We, so we build up our syllogism, we say, you know, the world is contingent in itself and everything which is contingent has to have a targeia for its existence over its non-existence. Therefore, the world has a targeia for its existence over its non-existence. And the only being in, otherwise there be a tarsal of contingents which can provide that ultimate targeia is a necessary being. He would say that is all transcendental illusion, because what you're doing is you're taking the pure ideas of reason and you, ideas of pure reason, and you're thinking that by clarifying your concept, your conceptual framework, you're uncovering the real nature of reality. But he says, "Against all my warnings in my critical philosophy, you're carrying, you'll get carried, you're carrying us away beyond the empirical use of the categories, which is the only legitimate use of them, as in concepts as applied to intuitions, and holds out to us the semblance of extending the pure understanding." So you're thinking you're extending your pure understanding, but you're not. And for him, science is of course all about extending our knowledge, and rightly so. So, "Transillusion influences principles whose use is not ever meant for experience." So the people say, "I'm an armchair metaphysician, I can get to these truths without even looking at experience." "We will call the principles whose application stays wholly and completely within the limits of possible experience imminent, but those that would fly beyond these boundaries, transcendent principles." So Kant wants to keep everything eminent and all transcendent, not transcendental, that's something else in Kant. Transcendent, he likes the transcendental, but he means the a priori conditions of all possible knowledge. But transcendent, no, that's like Plato and the forms. And, you know, as you can see, you'll, we'll go into next time. He, 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 he dealt, I think Plato is one of the most cited philosophers in the CPR, maybe second to Leibniz, I can't quite recall, but anyway. That's enough of that, let's have a very quick look at this. And. Call it a day. No, dear, Yusuf's not here again. Marlena, most of Aziz, would you read the Greek of one six point, where do we get to? Have you got the text, Armstrong?
You mean the bilingual edition, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's the, I think I have the video you sent.
Okay. Can we read from one six four? Peridetone prosotero calon.
Yes. Peridetone prosotero calon, ha uketi aistesis horan el eleche, sujede aniu organon horakai lege, ana bainontas de thessastae katalipontas, den aistis in kato perimenein. Josper, de epitontes aisteseos calon, ink in periauton legend toes mete, cheo, cheorakosi meth jos calon ante le menois. Joyon etines exarchis floe gegonotes, ton auton tropon ude perikalus epite diomaton. Epite diomaton toes mea apodexamenois. Toton epitedem, epitediomaton, ka epistemon, ka ton alon, ton toyuton kalos, ude peri aretes fengus toes mede fantastaisen. Jos calon totes tikios unes, ka esofros unes prosopon, ka ude hesperos ude eros, utokala, utokala.
Okay, can we just stop there? Thank you very much. So, "But about the beauties beyond, which it is no more the part of sense to see, but the soul sees them and speaks of them without instruments. We must go up to them and contemplate them and leave sense to stay down below. Just as in the case of the beauties of sense, it is impossible for those who have not seen them or grasped their beauty, those born blind, for instance, to speak about them. In the same way, only those can speak about the beauty of ways of life, who have accepted the beauty of ways of life and kinds of knowledge and everything else of the sort. And people cannot speak about the splendor of virtue who have never even imagined how fair is the face of justice and moral order. Neither the evening nor the morning star are as fair." Okay. I haven't got my glasses, because my son Mohammed Ali broke them. But I used to be able to read a few months ago without reading glasses, so let me try. Ala de adontas men enai hob suje ta pojata lepe, idontas de hes temas, ka ek plaxin laben ka ptoethenai polo palon, he entuis prosten ate alethenon heide efaptamen, ef, ef, efaptomenus. Taite taute garde ta pathi genestai perito hoti anhe calon, thambos ka ek plaxin hedean ka pothon ka herota ka toesin meth hedones. Can you read on, Sid, because I'm having trouble seeing properly?
Yeah. Esti de tauta pathin ka pashusin hyapsu hyai ka perita meh horomena. Pasai men jos epen mallon mentoe hyatuton erotikoterai josper ka epitont somaton pantes men horosi ken duntae duk isa al esin joe malista joe ka legonta eran.
Okay. So, "But there must be those who see this beauty by that with which the soul sees things of this sort. And when they see it, they must be delighted and overwhelmed and excited, much more than by those beauties we spoke of before, since now it is true beauty they are grasping. These experiences must occur whenever there is contact with any sort of beautiful thing, wonder and shock of delight and longing and passion and a happy excitement. One can have these experiences by contact with invisible beauties, and souls do have them practically all, but particularly those who are more passionately in love with the invisible, just as with bodies all see them, but all are not stung as sharply. But some who are called lovers are most of all." Right, so you see some people going to maqams and just, you know, having these extraordinary experiences, you might see them in tears or, Yanni, experiencing together this extraordinary barakat. And they're rising up to beauty in itself, they're rising up to a beauty which transcends the corporeal. "Then we must ask the lovers of that which is outside sense, what do you feel about beautiful ways of life, as we call them, and beautiful habits and well-ordered characters in general about virtuous activities and dispositions and the beauty of soul? Is what do you experience, you experience the beauty of that soul that's in that maqam? Do you have a, of that spirit, do you have a, there's no corporeal dimension whatsoever? For this is what true lovers feel, but what is it which makes them feel like this? Not shape or color or any size, but soul without color itself and possessing a moral order without color and possessing all the other light of the virtues. You feel like this when you see in yourself or in someone else greatness of soul, a righteous life, a pure morality, courage with its noble look and dignity and modesty, advancing in a fearless, calm and unperturbed disposition." Gosh, I can't see. Courage with its noble look and dignity and modesty advancing in a fearless, calm and unperturbed disposition and the godlike sight of intellect shining upon all this. We love and delight in these qualities, but why do they, why do we call them beautiful? They exist and appear to us, and he who sees them cannot possibly say anything else except that they, that they are what really exists. What does really exists mean, right? What's that here? Taontos onta, right? Taontos onta, that's a type of expression you often find to mean real being, true being, things which really exist, right? Topantelos on, the truly and completely existent, which of course is only the world of forms. That they exist, what does really exist mean? That they exist as beauties, but the argument still requires us to explain why real beings make the soul lovable. What is this kind of glorifying light and all the virtues? Would you like to take the opposites, the ugliness in soul, and contrast them with the beauties? Perhaps a consideration of what ugliness is and why it appears so will help us to find what we're looking for. Suppose then, an ugly soul, dissolute and unjust, full of all lusts and all disturbance, sunk in fears, no twakul, by its cowardice and jealousies, by its pettiness, thinking mean and mortal thoughts as far as it thinks at all, altogether distorted, loving impure pleasures, living a life which consists of bodily sensations and finding delight in its ugliness. Shall we not say that its ugliness came to it as a beauty, brought in from outside, injuring it and making it impure and mixed with a great deal of evil, with its life and perceptions no longer pure, but by the admixture of evil, living a dim life, can't see clearly, and diluted with a great deal of death, no longer seeing what the soul ought to see, no longer left in peace in itself, because it keeps on being dragged out and down and to the dark? Right? To the darks, cotainon. Impure, I think, and dragged in every direction towards the objects of sense with a great deal of bodily stuff mixed into it, consorting much with matter, that's ugliness, and receiving a form other than its own, it is changed by a mixture which makes it worse, just as if anyone gets into mud or filth, he does not show any more the beauty which he had. What is seen is what he wiped off on himself from the mud and filth, his ugliness has come from an addition of alien matter. And, and his business, if he is to be beautiful again, is to wash and clean himself and so be again what he was before. So we shall be right in saying that the soul becomes ugly by mixture and dilution and inclination towards the body and matter. This is the soul's ugliness, not being pure and unmixed like gold, but full of earthiness. If anyone takes the earthy stuff away, the gold is left and is beautiful. When it is singled out from other things and is alone by itself, in the same way the soul too, when it is separated from the lust which it has through the body, which it has through the body with which it consorted too much, and freed from its other affections, purged of what it gets from being embodied, when it abides alone, has put away all the ugliness which, which came from the other nature. For as was said in old times, self-control and courage and every virtue. Right? So, we've got sophrosune and andria and arete. Okay. Ah, a catharsis, okay? And you know catharsis, but this is catharsis. This is why the mystery is a purification and so is even wisdom itself. This is why the mysteries are not, this is why the mysteries are right when they say riddlingly, that the man who has not been purified will lie in mud when he goes to Hades, the afterlife, because the impure is fond of mud by reason of its badness. Now, you really love this, because this is like, gonna say he's a Muslim. "Just as pigs with ugly bodies like that sort of thing. For what can true, what can true self-control be, except not keeping company with bodily pleasures, but avoiding them as impure and belonging to something impure? Courage too is not being afraid of death. And death is the separation of body and soul, and a man does not fear this if he welcomes the prospect of being alone. Again, greatness of soul is despising the things here, and wisdom is an intellectual capacity, activity which turns away from the things below and leads the soul to those above. So, so the soul, when it is purified, becomes form and formative power, altogether bodiless and intellectual and entirely belonging to the divine whence beauty springs and all that is akin to its soul then." Soul then, when it is raised to the level of intellect, increases in beauty. Intellect and the things of intellect are its beauty, its own beauty and not others. Since only then, what is perfectly conformed to intellect, is it truly soul. For this reason, it is right to say that the soul's becoming something good and beautiful is its being made light like to God. I really can't see. Humo e o se nai, enai se o. Because from him comes beauty and all else which fail, falls to the lot of real beings. Or rather, beautifulness is reality and the other kind of thing is the ugly. And this same is the primary evil, so for God, which is matter. So for God, the qualities of goodness and beauty are the same or the realities, the good and beauty. Right? We stopped there. Salallahu ala siidina Malana Muhammadu Wa ala alihi washabihi isra'i. Wa ma arsalnak illa rahmatu lal alameen. And all of that beauty that he saw was really the beauty of the prophesies. That's what we believe. So, so again, we'll, we'll, we'll need another session to finish that. But the world of the forms is the world of beauty and truth and goodness and unity. And those properties are perspectival in that realm, because they're, they're fully unified, they're not really separate, they're not separate in that realm. But of course, they're about differences of perspective and from our perspective, different aspects of the human experience. I mean, truth is about, you know, the correspondence to reality and, you know, goodness is about human action in terms of ascending the hierarchy. And beauty is about the that splendor which causes us to want to make that journey, to be attracted to things. And ugliness is that falling away from integration, that falling away from pristine identity, that being fragmented and pulled to multiplicity when there should be a unity and so on. But we'll, we'll continue with that on Shalat Tala next time. I think we've gone on quite a long time, so we'll save, we'll save any discussion, if you'll forgive me for next time, because I think that we all need to get back. But, but I mean, let's leave five minutes if there is anything pressing. Anyone? Thank you so much, everyone, by the way, for, and Malana Mustafa Aziz for your wonderful interventions. This is Malana Samir Islam. Is, is there someone saying something at the same time?
Yes, sorry, I started, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Yeah. May I ask a really quick question about a passage that was discussed at the end of last, last session?
Yeah.
Really quickly, so I just, in the passage where Plotinus is criticizing.
Say anything, because you're more knowledgeable than I am.
No, no, this is a question, so.
Yeah, please, please illuminate us. I'm really tired of laughing.
I've just.
It's a lot of effort. I know I wrote this textbook on laughing, but even me, it's yellow.
I was just curious, so in, in, in part of the, this section of the Inya, Plotinus criticizes the view of those who say that beauty is just good measure and proportion and the harmonious relationship between parts. And then Plotinus says that, yes, but this is a limited view, because this means that beauty always takes place in things that are composite, they have manifold and there are various other problematic cases, such as gold or the night sky, how do you make sense of the beauty? So he, he's, but, but then, when he says, what is beauty for him? Well, it's in the forms, it's in the fact that the form brings the, the matter to a unity. So for, he wants to give a hensological account of beauty. He wants to reduce, he wants to say that the basic category is not good measure or proportion, but unity. But when he is saying that it's the form that brings to unity, he says, so beauty rests upon the material thing when it has been brought into unity and gives itself to parts and wholes alike. So this meteorological language is still there, so it, does this mean that, and I think this is probably what Caligus was saying in his commentary, but I just wanted to confirm, he's not, definitely not saying that goodness and proportion are not deeply involved in, in, in beauty, but that the, the source of the goodness and proportion is in the unifying function of the form. So that's where the beauty comes from. Is that the right way of understanding?
Thank you, I understand it now, so thank you. That's very good. So Samir Islam, just once, he, he says, just a small thing, you know, if you've got a few minutes. Could you just explain, I think he just wants to clarify, he said, could you explain the unfolding from the Haqiqah Muhammadia to the sensible world? Right? How long is that gonna take? And why are you asking me? How, how am I gonna do it? The unfolding of the Haqiqah Muhammadia to the sensible world, I thought the forms were Iainethabita. Yeah. What I'm saying is, the, the Platonists do have a bit of a problem, which is that they, they don't, I think, have a very convincing account. And I think you need revelation for this and you need the revelation of the divine names, really. But they don't have a very convincing account of where the forms come from, why they're there. And they tried to do it in terms of the unknown doctrines, the unwritten doctrines, in terms of Paris and Apiron and limity and infinite and the indefinite diet. And, and I, I've seen some accounts, perhaps I don't understand it well enough yet, but it, it doesn't, doesn't work for me, why the particular idiosyncrasies of that diversity would emerge from that particular. So now, of course, the one is Dunamis Tempenton. So he is all things virtually and he contains the power to be all things, not that he becomes all things, but he has the power to be all things, as in the power for all of determinate, for all determinate being to become determinate. So you might say that it's limit on that plenitude, which somehow has in some sort of super central way, the power to be a particular thing. But anyway, why am I saying Iainethabita? There's no, there's nothing, the Iainethabita are the sword of the Asmat, there's no sword of the Asmat in Platonism, because there's no Asmat. Now, God does have attributes in Platonism, but there's no, there's not this clear theory of the Asmat. And so that's why they're not, the Iainethabita are not the forms. The, the closest thing to the forms would be Alam al-Awah, which is a created realm. Remember, the Alam, the, the Iainethabita are not created, because they are God's eternal knowledge. So the Qadim. And Alam al-Awah is the first created realm and they understand creation to mean giving self-consciousness, because as Imam Asharani says in his, one of his books, the, you know, he asked the brilliant question, you know, if everything is already distinct and determinate and already there with Alazwajala in eternality, even though it's not determined in itself, it's just the Atibadi and it's just an object of his knowledge, it doesn't exist in itself, then what has the world gained by being created? It's already there, right? He says it gained knowledge of it, of, of its own essence, it gained self-knowledge. So in that understanding, creation means, in that first Martsala, which Alam al-Awah, means the things become conscious, they were kind of in this inert state of, of, you know, not being conscious of themselves and then they, they're given consciousness, they wake up, as it were. So Allah, Allah. Allah forgive us for all this, Yani, gurghurghurghur, beyond our pay grade, definitely. And to be legitimately speaking about these things, that has to be paid millions a year, I think. But, yeah, and the, the unfolding from the Haqiqah Muhammadia to the sensible world. Yeah, I think we'll have to save that from the other time. I did try to do that at the beginning, Malana. But it's a bit of a, bit of an ask, I don't want to bite off more than I can chew again. But, but, but let's do that next time, that, that's something we need to keep returning to, trying to understand that framework. It's not an emanationist framework. And again, the, this thing of throwing around these terms is, is unfortunate. You know, the, the, the Akbarians don't believe in eternal creation, they don't believe in, they do believe in the divine will. And even for Plotinus, I mean, in six eight, he says, you, you could construe the one as being a pure will and he's complete, has complete freedom and unrestricted freedom. And guess what? Six eight was not transmitted to the Muslim world. Very interesting, because, because it would have completely changed the terms of the debate. And someone, the last, who, who wrote the last message, because I don't recognize your name?
No, I just mentioned that I have two or three questions, but.
Oh, that's you, Malana, sorry, she says Shah Ahmed, so I didn't know it was you.
Yeah, I'm using my other computer, sorry about that. But yeah, it's okay, they, they're actually, they'd require a bit more extended discussion.
Malana Niasse has descended from the Moghul kings, so that's probably why his secret name is Shah, but he never told me about it.
I don't think that's true, but we'll see, Inshallah.
Right, we'll look forward to that on the group in jealousy. Wassalamu ala siidina Muhammadu.